Thank you for joining us this evening in a regularly scheduled Park City, or regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council on September 25th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsala. Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
A. Coram is the president, your honor.
Thank you. This evening, Councilman George Glover is going to lead in the invocation and Councilmember John Lenher is going to lead in the pledge. Everybody please stand.
Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for tonight. We thank you for being with us, Lord, and just helping us. We pray now for unity in the council and we seek wisdom, guidance, and discernment in doing the will of the people of Park City. We pray for provision of the folks in Park City, those who need jobs, those who need a home, or just anything that their provision they may need, Lord. We ask that you provide that and we just ask that people turn to you for that help. We just love you and we thank you for being our Lord and Savior, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And Jim, can I second that? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Our first item on the agenda this evening is awards and presentations and tonight I'll let Dana and Herschel come up and you can discuss what we have this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Man, and Council, and as always, we try to encourage our citizens to participate in recycle. It's a great program. It's great for the community. It's great for the environment and there's also a program that is called Recycle Perks that if you participate each time that you recycle, you get 50 points and then you can redeem those for rewards. When we first started this program, Waste Connections had a drawing that people could participate in and this evening we have the winner of the drawing. We have Debbie Folks here and she is going to receive an iPad, so I would like for Herschel West to come forward. He will present the iPad and if he has anything that he'd like to say about the program, he can certainly do that and then if Debbie Folks would come forward as well.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, Council. Yes, my name is Herschel with Waste Connections. We started recycling perks in June of this year and we had a little contest to see if we can get people to sign up online to get registered so they can redeem the rewards. And we had a winner, one winner in Wichita, one winner in Derby, one winner in Park City. And Debbie is the winner here in Park City, an iPad. There you go. Any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions for Herschel? No, it's in a, and congratulations on your iPad there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is public forum. Tonight we have one person signed out to speak at public forum. Dee Stewart.
Dee Stewart, Park City Pride. I haven't come to complain about anything. I haven't come to ask for money. Should we all clap now? I did come to ask for something. As you all know, Park City Pride has partnered with Flying Ducks Flying Discs Golf Company Store in Wichita, but they come up and put on golf tournaments, disc golf tournaments here in Park City, bring people in from all over the county, from other states, frequently from other states. Our next tournament will be October 21st, that's Sunday, and we did this last year. It's called the AMFAM and it's aimed at women players. It's all amateur and last year we had a team of four come in from Kansas City. I mean, we had people come in from Texas, but we had four women from Kansas City and they stayed here in our hotel and ate in our restaurants. So this year we're doing it again. They expect to fill. The limit is 90 players. They filled last year, they'll fill again this year. We're holding it earlier. We're changing our dates on all of our tournaments. We have had two really bad experiences in a row with the weather, not with the tournaments, but with the weather. They would like to have a beer garden. They are doing a benefit this time. They have not received any Park City money this time. They're doing a benefit for Opportunity Zone, which is an organization that provides things like hot showers and toiletries for homeless kids. And they'll have baskets out at the tournament for, you know, players and people who come in to drop, you know, little toiletries in and donate cash or whatever. They also like to have a beer garden that would be put on by Aeroplanes Brewing. Does anybody know Aeroplanes Brewing? I figured I have somebody who did. They actually make a non-alcoholic root beer too. That's probably more my speed, but anyway, they would like to have that up at the park. They've done this before in other locations. They know how to get everything off and have the licensing and, you know, take care of it. We just, but we need approval from the city to do that. So that's what I'm asking for tonight, if we could have a beer garden on October 21st.
So, Pre, what we need to do is add that to our next agenda and then Doug, we want to work through you, just make sure we do everything we need to correctly so that we can allow that.
Yeah, I'll have to have, Doug, will you let me know what all we need in case that, because if they approve it, we'll be going really quick because it's like 12 days.
Okay, we'll get that, we'll get that on the next one. Daniella, do you have that?
Okay. Thank you much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That was it for public forum this evening and we'll move on to our staff reports and we'll start with our Director of Public Works, Rick Norman. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works report for this evening, September 25th, 2018. First of all, our Park Department, September 20th, we sprayed Chisholm Point Lake for algae control. Several years ago, we started that. Our primary concern, the issue that we were dealing with at the time was predominantly curly leaf. Consistent application of spraying, we've almost eradicated that. There's almost no signs of that now, but we do still have the algae and we did spray for that. In the last two weeks, we've had graffiti removal on the half-pipe at the park. Apparently somebody got happy with a can of spray paint and we got that wiped off of there. We did also complete repairs to the community building air conditioning. We had a control switch that had went out, wasn't cooling. We got that repaired in the street department. September 12th and 13th, we completed a mosquito fogging. That's the planned end of that for this season. We did do road grading on 69th, 57th, and 58th. While back, a gas company had went in and done some work right there at the entrance on 57th, right there just west side of Broadway. We got them to come back out. They completed that, so we continued with that spot and went around the loop and we've got that graded. We did assist Park City Pride with the Eats and Beats event that they had. We provided them with bear cones, barricades, cones, trash receptacles, and portable restrooms. The water and sewer department, the average work orders per day for the first two weeks of September was 31. We have completed our annual sewer cleaning. The total on that was, that's in which we do a third of the city each year so that no section gets left undone more than three years. We still have to camera 10% of that. We're meeting with sewer contractor tomorrow, we'll discuss the areas and they plan on starting to camera that within the next two weeks. That's all I have for my report.
Rick, did you guys hit the ditches one more time?
I'm sorry?
Did you guys hit the ditches again? Because it looked like I'd seen where the ditches had been touched up a little bit more.
We did. The opportunity that we had, by circumstance, we had two of our side mounts down, but we went ahead and done it with a flail. It wasn't as good a job, so the opportunity presented itself this time. We got in and done a better job, so we did readdress that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for it? Melvin?
Do you have a brush and limdeck coming up?
We do. Councilmember Kerr, October 6th, the west end of the park. I believe the times are 8 to 1 o'clock on that. This is for our residents, so we would ask to bring your IDs on that. We discussed that yesterday at our meeting. We have that staffed. Also, on the same day, we have a shredded event up here at the administration center, so we have two events going on the same day on that. That's a service that the city provides and I think most people like the cost on that because it's free.
Yeah. I had somebody cutting some trees down. I was wondering about it, so.
That's good timing.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Ben?
Can I ask what the date was again?
I'm sorry?
October 6th, correct?
October 6th, first Saturday in October.
Ben?
Yes, Rick, I just want to tell you and your staff, thank you for the hard work. It's looked great out there lately. I know you all had a lot of rain to keep up with things and that's made it a little hard, especially with mosquitoes back out, but just wanted to tell you all thank you. And then I wanted to congratulate you on your 35, 33-plus years of work. You just wanted to say thank you for all you've done for our city.
Thank you, sir. The guys have been pretty busy with the mowers and it has been tough. We've run them quite happily this year. Thank you, sir.
So, Rick, I'm not going to let you get away that easy. I know after the staff meeting.
I was hoping, I was hoping.
Talked about, you know, some balloons, streamers falling from it, but this is Rick's final report for us as the Director of Public Works and we appreciate your dedicated service to the city and I want to congratulate you for your upcoming retirement and let everybody know that you hold the record for the years of service to the city, that 33 years of dedicated service. Rick started here in 1985 when he was hired to work in the Park Department and he grew up, or rose up through the ranks of being a street superintendent, water superintendent, and then the utility supervisor and finally to your current position of Director of Public Works. We'll be sorry to lose your wealth of knowledge and information that you have in your head there, but we do wish you well and we look forward to seeing you around the city enjoying your leisure time and your last day is October 1 and we just want to thank you again for everything you've done for the city of Park City.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And John?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 8-0. That brings us to new business, item A, and we have a consideration from the Committee for a Recommendation for the Director of Finance and City Clerk position.
Thank you, Mayor, Man, and Council, and as always, it is emotional when we have staff, that's great staff, that's leaving. We thank Rick for his service and we'd also like to thank Daniella for her service to the city as well. We do feel that we have a very qualified applicant that we would very much appreciate your consideration for the committee to move forward and the city to move forward hiring this individual. You have before you a resume which outlines the experience that she does have and as you can see from that, the individual that we're speaking about is Deanne Grunder. She does, she is a CPA licensed in Kansas. She has extensive experience in governmental accounting. She has 24 years of experience in municipal government accounting, including 18 years working for the city of El Dorado, 16 years in management, and two and a half years as a financial auditor. Her employment experience includes the business manager at Circle Public Schools, which is USD 375. At Wichita Public Schools, USD 259, she was the Director of Budgeting. Her municipal experience at the city of El Dorado is very wide and broad for the position here. She left as the Finance Director, City Clerk, but she started out and she worked her way up. So she started out, she did the utility billing, the accounts payable clerk, the assistant finance director, the city clerk, the finance director. So as you know, for our city, we're needing an experienced finance director, city clerk, and to supervise all of those positions that we just mentioned. So we feel that she has had a track record of a successful series of progressive financial positions and therefore we're asking this evening for your consideration and approval to hire her. I would be happy to answer any questions and she is here tonight as well and I'm going to ask her to step up.
Very pleased to be here this evening. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Does anyone give any direction for the committee? John?
I'd make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the committee and proceed.
And Ben?
A second for discussion.
Go ahead.
Just had one question, actually. When we talk about the committee, are we just talking about the HR? Who is the committee? Sorry.
Excuse me. The committee is myself, our city administrator, Jack Witz, and Daniella, who is the current Director of Finance, City Clerk in that position, so that's the committee.
Perfect.
Does my own question?
Okay. Tom?
I just have one question. It's on longevity. I noticed that the last, at Circle High, you've only been there three months.
That is correct.
So you were looking when you took that job or?
I was not. The position I was, it was described to me as not what the position turned out to be and I just know once I get some things cleaned up that need worked out there that there will be no challenge there for me. They do not need a CPA. They do not need somebody with my kind of background to do what they're having.
I ask that question because I'm concerned when I see short spans of work.
I totally understand that and there's a part of me that hates that too because that's not the way I'm built. I'm very much loyal and I stay and, but I can just see that it is not the right position for me, so.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstain?
Abstain.
And that passes 7-0-1. Thank you very much. We appreciate it and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. That brings us to item B, which is Consider a Resolution Determining the Advisability of the Making of Certain Internal Improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, Making Certain Findings With Respect Thereunto and Authorizing and Providing for the Making of Improvements in Ordinance With Such Findings, Paving Improvements Phase Four, High Ridge, Second Edition. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A second here. Drawing so you can identify. If you look at your monitors, the area in pink is the area to be receiving the improvements. This improvement will connect up and finish out the roads in that section of High Ridge and connect back up to Ravina. This is a coordinated effort of Bob Armstrong, who builds, has built houses here and also with TJ, which you're kind of familiar with, is going to work with him in developing these 16 lots. I've checked and verified that all the taxes that was in arrears from the previous corporation that owned them has been paid. I would recommend that if you approve this, that you approve it subject to 35% letters of credit, which is our standard policy.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Jack? John?
Jack, can you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
So I just have a question for you on if this will open up or change any other monies that we need to allocate towards drainage or right there where Ravina curves around, I guess downward, there's kind of a street that goes up and ends. Is that not going to continue, I'm assuming?
I'm sorry, but this one, if I can do it here. This is the connection up to the Ravina Road right there and that connects up here.
Okay, so it is. Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood that. Okay, so the Ravina ditch that we put a flat surface in a few years ago, will this, I mean, the drainage here, will there be any changes in where that flows or, I mean, I can see why it goes into that pond there.
No, no, it doesn't. There is a drainage plan on file and the builders will have to comply with that drainage plan. Back when it was plotted, these, here, these lots along here will go in that direction. Some of these lots will go here and then move down that direction.
Okay. Thank you.
They will have to, individual home builders will have to go in and improve those ditches along there to receive the house drainage.
I was more thinking of the one, the Ravina up to the east or to the right where we put the flat surface in a few years ago that caved in so bad. It looks like it's just to the east of where these are, but.
Yeah. The road, even though it's paving, will take care of some of the drainage and direct the drainage also.
So John, what you're talking about is off of Fairchild where it's got the concrete runs through and then we have the small creek that runs back into the pond, right?
Right, and my, I mean, this is obviously going to create a little bit more drainage in that area with the rooftops.
I see what you're saying.
I am, yes.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Right.
Ravina ditch there, just because, I mean, obviously we're going to have more rooftops, more concrete, more driveways, more of that, that's going to be flowing into that. I understand the distance isn't very long, but is, what's the bottom portion of that ditch from there to the north at this point? Is it riprap or is there anything?
It's just native, native. We stopped our improvements there at the, right here is where the paved ditch stopped and it releases drainage here to here. These houses here, I think there are some houses now building right in here. They drain to the ditch. There's no houses here to drain to the ditch. Like I say, most likely this, these lots are going to drain that way. These are going to go here and hopefully go there.
Right. Will this part of, will there be an HOA in this section or is there already?
They're part of the, they will be part of the HOA.
Okay, so then I'm going to assume that everything north of where we're beginning here would be within that HOA, so maybe the drainage would fall into them from that point.
Yeah, that's their reserve area.
Okay.
Everything west of Grove will remain in the High Ridge HOA.
Thank you.
Yeah. Jim?
I think you said this, but just to clarify, so High Ridge will connect around the east side to Ravina, so the High Ridge Street, the people on High Ridge Street will get a second entrance now or through the street, which I would imagine would be nice for them.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
In case of some event happening and blocking off over there near a hydraulic, it's good to have the second exit. In fact, the fire department likes to see two entrances into any area, even though they're not paved, they can at least drive their trucks into there, so.
Okay, Ben?
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve the resolution determining the advisability of the making of a certain internal improvement in the city of Park City, Kansas, Making Certain Findings With Respect Thereunto and Authorizing and Providing for the Making of the Improvement in accordance with such findings with the added on there that a 35% letter, or letter of, or letter of credit there be approved, included.
And George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsala.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes 8-0?
That is Resolution 1006-2018.
Thank you. That brings us to item C, which is Consider a Resolution Determining the Advisabilities in Making of Certain Internal Improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, Making Certain Findings With Respect Thereunto and Authorizing and Providing for the Making of Improvements in accordance with such findings, the water improvements, Phase Four, High Ridge, Second Edition.
Mr. Mayor, this is just for the water lines. You notice there's nothing for sewer because sewer was put in a few years ago and so these lots already have specials on them for sanitary sewer, so this will complete the utilities needed to start building houses. And again, I would hope that you would put onto the motion to approve, if you do, that they obtain a letter of credit equal to 35% of the cost.
Okay, Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion then that we approve the resolution as presented there with the added 35% letter of credit.
And George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsala.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes 8-0?
That is 1007-2018.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item D, which is Consider the Approval of the Final Plat for Air Capital Industrial Park, Second Edition. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you look at your monitors, this is the plat. On the right-hand side over here is the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control. So it's just a butt stat on the west side, just as you cross the bridge, the property's on the north side. There are two ponds, one here and one here, and a drainage way connecting those two into the ditch. It's almost like a mulk, I guess that's what you call it, to protect the property owners over here from receiving excess water. It had to be raised out of the floodplain in order to build on the property and they're in the process of getting that done currently. It's the plants for the drainage and stuff, went through the Division of Water Resources and as soon as they reach their maximum elevation to take it out of the floodplain, they will have to apply to FEMA to get a MATT amendment to physically take it out of the floodplain. This is, this lot here is where I think they're intending to put Northern Pipeline operation once they get it out of the floodplain and stuff. The planning commission voted on this and is recommending your approval.
Ken? Tom?
I'd make a motion, we approve the final plat for Air Capital Industrial Park, Second Edition.
Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 8-0. That brings us to item E, which is Consider the Approval of the Final Plat for Air Capital Industrial Park, Third Edition. Jack?
Here again, if you look on your monitors, this is a copy of the plat. Now, these two plats are basically adjoining each other. This is the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control. They're marked in red, so this is the east edge. So if you're headed west on 61st Street and you get through Leakers and some other buildings there and you see all the land being earthwork
and you see all the land being, uh, 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 earthwork and stuff, that's this particular property. They will have a big pond there to receive the drainage from the site. They're going to build, uh, their shop area about right there, hopefully not in that configuration, uh, but that's their intent. This is APAC Trucking, you approved the IRBs for it. Most of the site is going to stay pretty much in the floodplain, but they're using it just for parking. Building itself will be two foot above the floodplain and will go through the same procedure as the other site has to with the Division of Water Resources, then again with FEMA before they're allowed to build. Uh, Planning Commission has reviewed this and recommends your approval.
Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we approve the final plat here.
For the industrial park for the third edition?
Yes.
Okay. And Ben, then, Jim?
I'd second that.
Do you have anything?
Well, I've got one question. Will that lot be paved?
Yes, it will be, uh, rock and millings. Okay, it won't be asphalt, but it will be millings on top of it. In fact, uh, the Planning Commission, if it's all right, the mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
The Planning Commission just, uh, approved them crushing, uh, concrete on the site, uh, to use as base material, uh, for the parking lot here, and hopefully for the other site across the way. They'll put the base material down similar to what they did at the auto auctions, and then they'll come in and, uh, cover it with, uh, asphalt millings.
My concerns attest.
Correct. Mine too, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to Item F, which is Consider Ordinance Amending Section Five dash five oh three of the Municipal Code, Removing Finger Printing Requirement from the Permit Process for Massage Therapists. Doug?
Mayor and Council, about three or four years ago, uh, the council adopted over a period of about four or five months, uh, several, uh, modifications to our ordinances to try to address, uh, what we saw as some potential problem with massage therapists, uh, a- and so we set up a, a fairly comprehensive, uh, licensing requirement. Uh, we, we thought a good way to guarantee that, um, massage therapists would be legitimate and wouldn't be engaged in any, any illegal activity. Uh, we haven't had any problems, and, and what, uh, the police department came to me and, and, uh, and asked for was, uh, to change the requirement that existed under that subsection nine that you see there in, in, uh, Section Five, Five oh three, which requires fingerprinting of an applicant. We require that in no other, uh, licensing that we do in the city. And so the substitution that the police department asked for, and I, I think is very reasonable, is to just require a current valid government-issued photo ID card license or passport and do away with, uh, the fingerprinting. So I would recommend that you adopt the ordinance as amended.
Thank you, Doug. Does anybody have any questions for Doug? Okay, is there a recommendation from the council? Ben?
Yes, I'd go ahead and make a motion here that we approve the ordinance as amended here for Section Five dash Five oh three of the Municipal Court, of the Municipal Code, removing fingerprinting requirements for the permit process for massage therapists.
Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsala.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schroeder.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes eight zero?
That ordinance number is one oh four seven dash two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. That brings us to Item G, which is Concerning Builder Incentive for Duplexes. Jack? Not here. You're.
Yeah, it's not here.
Yeah.
The, the, if you remember right, uh, there were High Ridge Three, which is at the corner of, of Hydraulic and Sixty-ninth Street. There were thirty plotted, platted lots, uh, for duplexes. Uh, the gentleman that bought the lot at the time, um, we, we had six thousand dollars incentive for duplexes. He bought the property, and then we eliminated the incentive. Uh, he just found out that we have eliminated the, uh, incentive, and would like for you to reconsider, if not six thousand, something, uh, in the way of incentives for that. So, I told him that, uh, we would put it back on the agenda and get your discussion on that, whether or not you would consider or not consider, uh, putting an incentive on duplex lots.
I know Jack and I talked, talked about this, and I, I'm a little irritated by this. The council, we've already made a decision on how we're going to do it. There are no guarantees on that. Usually that came with a year-to-year, um, update where we came back and did that, and then we did that for a reason, um, because of where we were financially in the incentive process. Even worse, that the, the developer did not show up this evening. I personally think the council should take no action. We could, should stick with what we did. Um, we've already said we weren't going to do this for these duplexes, and we should move forward, but I'd like to hear from the council. Jim?
The incentives was, this was a budgeted item, and we did not budget for them. So, is he talking about incentives in seventeen, or eighteen, or nineteen?
Going forward, from today going forward, he wants incentives on this.
You know, but the ones we backed out that we said we would no longer do, that was for next year, right?
Well, we had an incentive, we had an incentive thing in place, and we ended it. And when we ended it, that ended it going forward. If you remember right, we also put a date on that. We gave some people, well, I think we gave two weeks where builders could come in and get permits so they could still qualify for that. And then that time has expired.
Okay.
I'm thoroughly annoyed that we were even asked to bring this.
Well, that was, that was my question, was what was, it's where I was headed with that question, is where was the timeframe, and are we past that, which we are? And if we even had money budgeted for this, even if we wanted to do it?
No, we don't.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Yeah. Ben?
No, I would definitely agree. The fact that the builder's not here, um, they're to represent or even ask in person for it says a lot. They're on that, and my understanding though, and I guess I'm just a little confused, so if you can help me on that part. When we, when we decided to stop the incentive program, we ended it that night, wasn't that correct?
We, we gave a few days on that, where people could come in and get permits, and then it ended.
I think we gave through the end of the next business day.
Is that what we did?
Yeah.
I remember we gave, we gave some time for some people to come in and pull permits.
Yeah, if you pulled a permit.
And we did have some people come and pull permits beforehand to get those incentives.
And we, we honored those, yeah.
Sure, and I, I, I mean, I have no problem saying no on this, because again, there was plenty of time, and I think the, the budget item, the budget's not there. The money's not there to budget or to, to do this, plus the fact they don't show up, so I would be in agreement with Mayors. I would recommend we don't take any action and move on.
John?
Yeah, I'm, same thing. I mean, I feel like if, if we give this to him, then what are the other builders going to follow right in behind him and want the exact same thing, because they also bought their land thing and the same thing, so I'll make a motion, we take no action.
George, you were lit up, and then you, did you want to second for a discussion?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say that incentives have ended. Um, he's obviously not here to represent himself, so I wouldn't be inclusive and, and, and just take no action and ending it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to take no action. Um, I see no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to Item H, which is Consider the Approval of Springstead Waters Executive Recruiting, um, Recruiting Search Firm Proposal and Authorize a Contract in the Amount of Twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars to be funded out of the twenty eighteen MTB Fund. George?
Yeah, we, uh, our committee, composed of three council members, we, uh, talked about how to go about this process. We received six RFPs back. We actually graded those RFPs to see the most, uh, qualified individual or candidate. We looked at prior experience, similar work, qualifications of staff, methodology and scope, understanding of service, fees charged, and timeframe, and also references. You'll see in your attachment in the back who we've selected as the number one candidate. Uh, we'd like for the council to look over that and see if they have any questions. Springstead Waters is the one that we have chosen. This is an actual firm that has, has done over six executive searches in the state of Kansas, just based on, on local searches. They also accredited to work in the state of Kansas, which is a plus for me. So, we basically come before you requesting those funds, uh, and go ahead and move, move along with the contract so we can get started on this executive, this search for our new city administrator. We know that's important, because the city administrator is a reflection of the city, so we'd like to proceed on that. Thank you.
George?
I had a, well, I, I was reading this. This is the twenty eighteen budget comma MTBE fund. Is that one or both, or?
Well, Danielle, you want to tackle that?
So, it would be appropriated this year, out of this year's budget, out of the MTBE fund.
Okay.
That make, that make sense? Yeah, so we would be using MTBE funds to, to pay for this.
Okay.
Okay. Jim?
I just kind of wanted to echo George's support of this. I was on the committee as well. And, um, just kind of high level, the, these guys are extremely experienced, twenty-five years of experience, one of the most experienced in the group. Middle of the pack on cost, so this is not, not the high-cost provider. Everybody's saying ninety to a hundred and twenty days of, of a timeframe to complete the process and, and get a candidate in here. So, just a little high-level feedback on what, what the, what we know so far and the timeframe and the cost.
Okay, Brandy?
I just want to say, um, after reading all these RFPs, I was on the committee as well, um, Springstead did come in, their presentation, I think, was top of the, top of the pack. Um, the cost, as Jim said, they came in the middle. We ranged anywhere from twenty-one thousand to twenty-six thousand, so we're right in the middle. But I think as far as their presentation, it was the best presentation. Um, and then I think it's important for the council to know that, um, more, we are not going to have a city administrator. If we do this, we're not going to have a city administrator in place until probably, probably early twenty nineteen. So I just want to make sure that you guys are fully aware of that.
Okay, Tom?
I'm disappointed it took us three months to get here to put an application out on the street, uh, and now we're looking at four to six months to get something back. Uh, the only positive I saw, I'm also opposed to the MTBE money being used for that. Uh, I'm, but the positive side of this, I see there's an insurance policy on there for guaranteeing for two years that we'll have an administrator, so. I understand why we're doing it. I just think it's taking too long, so.
George?
Well, I'm not too excited about the length of time. I served here as the chief of police for six years, and we didn't have a city administrator. The mayor served in that, in that capacity. I have complete confidence in Mayor Mann to handle that situation until we have one in place. I, the main thing I want to do is get it right. You talk about twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, it could cost you a lot more than that if you get it wrong. I guarantee it costs you more than that if you get it wrong. So, I, I think, uh, I think the danger of maybe going past is not, not that acute. Uh, I have extreme confidence in our department heads. I, I think they'll handle the job, and the mayor, they'll handle it just fine till we get one in place. But guys, for crying out loud, let's do it right the first time.
Yeah. I just want to come back and on the, on the speed thing, once again, this is top position within our city. This is, this is the face, the vocal point of our city, and to rush something and expect that you were going to have somebody within thirty days is ridiculous. For me, the, the moment I got the notice, this was a six-month adventure for us. That is going to take us to make sure. Yes, you can look at that dollar amount, it is a lot of money, but as George, um, put, it will cost you a lot more if you waste your time sticking the wrong person in that, in that seat. So it's wise of us, um, to do an extensive search here and to use this third party to try to bring us a candidate that will suit what we're looking for in the city of Park City. Jim?
Hey, I just wanted to address the timing thing too, just because I spent five nights, five evenings of my week last night, or last week, in, in meetings with this and, and a couple other things, but boy, it wasn't, the timing isn't, it isn't taking a long time from lack of effort. We sent out twenty-six RFPs, review, had six respondents reviewed, and we put tight timetables on this, so when we got started, there was no messing around, and we weren't, we weren't losing time. Um, and just, just reference, every, every one that came in said ninety to a hundred and twenty days. I don't remember anything but four to six months, so unless you were talking about a whole time period, but, uh, like Brandy said, I think we're talking about the end of January. So we're, we're, we're close, and we're moving pretty quick.
And I, I would say too, from the moment, the time that the committee was put together, you guys met quickly. It wasn't like you took, uh, a month off and then decided to get together. You, you met fairly quickly. You had multiple meetings. I think the committee did a fantastic job working on this. I'm very impressed. Ben?
Sure, I just want to echo that there. I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Glover and Bailey and Schroeder for taking the time, because it is a lot of work, no doubt. Uh, as been mentioned, we're, as, as Councilman Capps mentioned, we're, we're looking for the top person that's going to represent our city here, and so we want to make sure to get it right. So I appreciate you guys' time, and it's, it's, it's a, a lot of work there. So with that, I would make a motion here that we approve, uh, the contract for Springstead Waters Executive Recruitment Search Firm, uh, for the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars to be funded out of the twenty eighteen budget from the MTBE money.
Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to our last item on the agenda, which is a discussion around the rural, rural water district fees. At last meeting, Tom brought this up, and really the idea was to see if there was an interest of maybe Tom and two other council members serving together to look into these rural water district fees to see if something could be done. Tom?
I'd like to say, uh, about three weeks ago, I was approached by a local builder that builds in rural, in, uh, up there, and he complained about paying the extra two hundred and fifty dollars for a hookup fee that goes directly to the rural water district. Um, and then customers up there are paying seventeen percent on top of Park City water fee, and wanted to know since there was other things going on in northern Sedgwick County with rural water districts, and negotiating contracts different than what we got to go in and build in areas, that we investigate that, and that's why I brought it up. Um, Jack and I've looked at it. Jack and I went to the PICA several times when we were back in the early two thousands, trying to get some changes. Uh, there was some changes made. I don't know that I really understand them, because, uh, Rural Water District Number Two did not provide any information to anybody at that time. And they've started piecing it out, and it appears that they've, uh, taken out of their footprint. They have a water district footprint, but any area that's a city now is outside the boundaries, or they've been taken out of the, uh, active function, I guess you would say, of that rural water district, which it looks like that they're not part of it anymore, but they're still covered by it. And, uh, I think they've done that so that we have no right to go be part of that rural water district as far as voting members or being, uh, on the boards and stuff. I just wanted to investigate it without speculating too much tonight.
Okay. I know in the packet, we also included a copy of the court order on that. So, I guess what I would like to know would be there, is there an interest in two other council members joining Tom, uh, to investigate to see if something could be done?
Again, it's, uh, Ward One's the only one affected by this, so, but it affects all of our new businesses in that area and all new development.
Okay, Jim?
I don't consider myself an authority on, on water, but it is Ward One. Tom's told me about this. It's, it's got my attention. I'm concerned. I, I, you know, I volunteer my time to go help to figure out what's going on with this deal, if, if and what can be done.
Okay, John?
Well, we've, we've hit on this many times since oh five when I've been here, but I just feel like it became stale. I mean, I felt like the agreement's pretty clear, it's pretty plain. I mean, our attorney looked at it. I mean, our attorney looked at it, we actually hired a lobbyist at one time to do some work on it. They've got us by the throat, I mean, there's just nothing better to it. I mean, I called back years ago and asked about getting on the board. Can't get on the board unless you have water, but you only get water if they vote to give you water. But I asked about just seeing, okay, what do I need to do to get a hydrant ran to my house, 'cause I'm in the work, or they don't have the capacity just to run line like that. So, I mean, I just feel like, yeah, I'd love to do it, but I mean, I feel like for some reason at the time, our attorney at the time, who's no longer an attorney anymore, gave us some pretty bad advice, and we agreed to it and there's no sunset clause in the agreement. So I'm not against being on, I'll help out, but I just, I feel like it's very uphill and it's gonna be very tough. And I mean, I guess I'd, I'd like to see some evidence from our attorney as well.
Okay, Tom?
The only thing I could say that we could do at this time would be investigate what's going on in the area and how other cities are handling this and what it's costing. We may have the best deal, I don't know. But I know they're going in and buying, writing a check to service areas, and then rural water districts buying out or backing out of it on rural water district number one over Bel Air and Ketchikan, places like that. They can go in and write a check and the rural water district just pulls out and lets them service the area.
Yeah, but we, we signed an agreement with no sunset date on it that said we would do this, so I guess I'd defer to the attorney.
We don't have an agreement, we have a lawsuit.
Right.
There's no agreement. There's no negotiation.
Okay.
It's a lawsuit that requires these things. Now, you know, I guess you could approach the rural water district and ask if they wished for us to buy them out. I tried with Mayor Stewart several years ago to mediate this, and the attorney representing the rural water district knows that he's got no reason to be very agreeable in any kind of mediation or negotiation, and we really didn't get anywhere. We did have our lobbyist about seven or eight years ago successfully lobby the Kansas legislature so that now the people in Ward One that make these payments to the rural water district, even though they come through us in the water bill, are considered to be members of the rural water district, which means that they are people that are entitled to vote. And so the, the only approach that I think we've mentioned to anybody in the, in Ward One who has an interest in doing something, and, and my experience over the several years is there really haven't been very many people that have really cared much about it that I'm aware of. But that their, their recourse would be to get together and try to get to the point where they had some sort of a majority at a meeting where they could take some action that would reverse this or do away with it or agree to sell their rural water district interest to the city of Park City. But is, that's about the only recourse that I'm aware of.
And I've been told, and I don't have firsthand, Doug, that the people that are in, that are paying that fee are not subject to be, able to be members in the rural water district because they've excluded them on their map as being an opportunity to be a member.
That's not true. This, this state statute says if you pay a fee, you are considered to be a member. That's regardless of whether you're within their boundaries or whether what they say about who you are or who you aren't. If you pay a fee, and the people that do this in Ward One are members of the rural water district for the purposes of voting.
I know people in Ward One that have asked them to provide information when they have their annual meeting and they don't get that either. So it's not posted well, so, like I said, I had a builder approach me, that's the only reason I'm talking about it.
Once again, what would, the only real benefit here would be if three people wanna come together, look at this, and there's more of an education piece. It's to re-educate not only ourselves where we're at, but then also maybe finding a way that we can pump out a message to those people that live in Ward One that might be impacted by this, that we could send a flyer or some type of communication that, hey, if you're impacted by this, you have these rights and this is what you could do. That would be the best thing to look at from a committee perspective, is just the education value in trying to learn, clear up understandings, and then maybe we put something on the website where somebody from Ward One could go look and read up on it, or even send out some type of communication in Ward One, just where those individuals have information, let them know it's really kinda on them, but these are the options and these are your rights that you do have, versus saying, that person said, this person said, it's just, there's an education value to this.
I would, if Tom says he knows a citizen that is, maybe has some interest in being in it too, I mean, I think that would be great as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
If you've got a citizen that you know that wants to have some, an active...
Or like, can together before we even meet.
Yeah.
Before we get together, so.
Okay, Jim?
I really just wanted to, the mayor said, similar to what I was gonna say, but just that I live in Ward One, had no idea my water was coming from any rural water district until it came up here. I pay my water bill.
Well, it's not coming from the rural water district. This is just a surcharge that we collect.
But I guess my point is, I didn't know they, I didn't know we had any kind of relationship. You mentioned about us having rights to the rural water district as you, or I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that correctly, but what you said, but I don't, if I didn't know, I'm pretty doggone certain, most people in Ward One don't know anything about this. And I think if they did, they probably wouldn't be real excited about paying a seventeen percent surcharge. So that's my point and I, why I'd like to see at least, at least what the mayor said, let's find out what's going on, let's find out our options and what Tom said, and see if there's anything to be done about it, so it seems, and if we find out that nothing can be done about it, let's educate.
Okay, John, would you like to serve on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion that we have Tom, Jim, and John serve on the committee just to look into the rural water district fees? Ben?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay. George? Okay, we got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Last steps, governing body remarks. Dana, I can't let this go either. Ah, do you wanna come up? Are you sure? I think everybody needs to know today's Dana's birthday, so we all wanna wish Dana a very happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We won't sing, because we'll all be off key and on mic. So happy birthday, Dana, we appreciate everything you do. Jim?
Hey, I just would like to clarify a response earlier that while I know about Aeroplanes Brewery, I'm not a huge customer. I have a business relationship with their landlord, so I do know about the company, could provide a very good referral if you needed it. That's all I have.
All right, Brandy?
I don't have anything tonight.
George?
I don't have anything.
Tom?
I've got a couple of things. One is that city got a complaint about mosquito spraying last week, and I've been playing phone tag with the person that filed that complaint. So I've called them back again, they've called me and I've called them back, and so I haven't talked to them yet, but I plan on trying to get that rectified. Last Thursday, EMS station over on Fifty-third Street had a grand opening again, they've gone inside and totally rebuilt that. County, all the county officers were there and fire department and stuff, and they had quite an event. Talked to the chamber about the Indian on Sixty-first Street, and they'd like to be part of rejuvenating that, so there'll be some funds available if we go to them and ask. Transportation, state transportation committee's been put together, Carolyn McGinn's co-sharing, they're having a meeting in Newton on the fourth of October. Area projects is being presented. I talked to Liver Bella yesterday, and he can't make it, but his son's gonna go up there and make a presentation on North Junction and freight logistics in north Sedgwick County. Been asked, or Jack's been asked to attend if we wanna go or would go and support that, so just kinda give everybody a heads up on that.
Thanks, Tom. Melvin?
I had a question for Jack, I guess. The building that we're selling, the maintenance building, I was approached at the, there's some fencing that's on CCUA property.
Correct.
That needs to be moved.
It's in the contract.
Okay.
Yeah, if you read the contract, it's in there.
I guess I missed that part of it, so. Anyway, okay, that's all I had.
Ben?
Sure, October thirteenth, Saturday, I'll do my con pose over coffee at the daylight donuts, nine thirty to ten thirty, so come on out for that. And then also wanna say welcome to Ms. Deanne Grunder. I'll be looking forward to working with you there. And then also wanna take a second and recognize our police officers here. Several of our officers, as Chief had mentioned, had a relationship with Deputy Kunsy. My cousin trained with him actually in the sheriff's department back in two thousand and six and had a very close relationship with him as well. And each day, our, our police officers are putting their lives on the line willingly for our protection, and they do it for people that they don't even know and won't ever see most of the time, and they do it willingly. And so to our police officers, our men there that serve, our women that serve, to their families, I wanna say thank you very much for all that you do in keeping us safe and making sure that you all are recognized for that.
George?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Rick Norman as well, for his dedicated service. Thirty-three years is a long time, so I'd like to thank him and all that he's done for Park City. Also wanna welcome Ms. Deanne Grunder to Park City.
Thank you.
John?
I'd go the same thing and have nothing, so I would make a motion to adjourn.
And Jim?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. Thank you.